Please rise for the board prayer led by Mr. Jimmy Rogers.
Let us pray. Most kind and gracious, heavenly Father, again, we thank you for the opportunity to be here. Lord, by the presence here, we know Haywood County Schools are the best schools in this state. Lord, we pray that you guide this board, that we can better make the decisions to help the teachers, help the staff, help give them every tool they need to help educate the children of this county, and then that they become productive citizens as we grow, as we work hard. Lord, we pray that these rules and guides and laws that the state and the federal government places before us, that we're able to use them to the best abilities to educate our children. Lord, we thank you for the many blessings that you've given us. Lord, we pray for those that are ill or sick. We pray for those that we've lost. And Lord, we pray that you guide us and direct us all, and that we can have a good, safe year, and we can finish school up being on top again. Guide and direct us in all these things that we do, and we'll give you the praise and the glory for them all. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Board members, our next regular board meeting will be held here at the Education Center on March 12th at 7:00 PM. I'd also like to take this opportunity to announce there is a retirement reception for Dr. Ann Garrett that's this Thursday, February 15th, at the Tuscaloosa High School lobby. Everyone is asked to attend and invited to attend. I understand we'll have some refreshments and share some memories of Dr. Garrett and her tenure as our superintendent here at Haywood County Schools. Again, that's at Tuscaloosa High School in the lobby from 4:00 to 6:00, and everyone is welcome to come. I'd also like to take this opportunity to announce about the Mardi Gras Ball that's going to be held on February the 24th. And board members, you have an opportunity to attend this fundraiser. It's a lot of fun, and a lot of money's raised for Haywood County Schools. If you haven't made plans to attend, at least make plans to vote with your dollars for the king and queen of the Mardi Gras Ball. And it's amazing the amount of money these folks raise. They have fundraisers for the fundraiser. And it's kind of morphed into a huge, huge undertaking. And I just think everyone has been run for king and queen for that time that they've spent. It's a huge amount of effort, and it's a huge amount of money that's raised each year. And it goes right back to Haywood County Schools. Board members, we have a school board 101 planned February 28th in Raleigh. That's February 28th through March 1st. If you can attend, I think we've got one board member's going to be able to go. And they'll schedule another one in the future for anyone else that would like to go. And we received, board members, I haven't had a chance to hand this to you, but just like to say thank you to the Frog Level Fellowship's House of Prayer. They prayed for the Haywood County School Board the other day and sent us a letter letting us know that, so we appreciate your prayers and thoughts as we make tough decisions these days. At this time, I want to take a moment of personal privilege. I want to recognize and congratulate a classmate of mine that I went to school with back a long time ago. And went to East Waynesville Elementary School, which is about where Stereo Innovations is now, or about where Cornerstone Cafe is. And started out in the first grade there. And Ms. Sherri Arrington is going to retire, and I just wanted to congratulate her on her many years of service to Haywood County Schools. We thank you for those years of service. And I know that there'll be payback on me announcing this tonight, so I'll just be waiting for you. I got her not too long ago down at the school. I had some pictures of her back in the second grade, and somehow I know they got down to Junealuska Elementary School via one of my grandsons, so I know I'll be having payback on that. Any other announcements that need to be made at this time? Under agenda adjustments, we have several. We're going to add a calendar item. Since we've had a few snow days, we need to look at our calendar, and we're going to add that right after the finance committee meeting, or the report from Mr. Clark tonight since Mr. Henson had to leave early. And we also have a few items from building and grounds that need to be taken care of, and we'll add that right after the policies, right prior to the monthly financial reports. Are there any other adjustments to the agenda at this time? Is there any objection to the changes I have announced? There being none, then we will adjust our agenda as noted. Next on our agenda, it's with a lot of pleasure that I would like to introduce to you Ms. Belinda Trantham.
Chairman Francis, Dr. Garrett, Dr. Nolte, members of the board. It's with great pleasure tonight that I introduce North Canton Elementary for their spotlight. It is great to see all these people here tonight to celebrate. We have such a wonderful school system. I, along with all of you, I know are proud of all of our teachers and all of our schools. North Canton is a wonderful school with wonderful staff, students, and support from their community. And so at this time, I'm going to introduce Ms. Mann, the principal at North Canton.
I brought a crew with me so I didn't have to talk alone. Dr. Garrett, Dr. Nolte, Chairman Francis, members of the board, thank you for having us here tonight so that we can spotlight North Canton Elementary. Okay. While I was a teacher at North Canton Elementary, we were always wanting more and more volunteers. We had so many kids that just needed for people to listen to them read. And we had a foster grandparent that would come, and she came almost every day, and the kids always fought over who got to read to the foster grandparent. So when I became the principal of North Canton Elementary, and I hired my lead teacher, Jane Mauer, who is here, we both had the same idea. We need more volunteers in our school. We want these kids to have somebody to listen to them read. So that idea got started, and then I met Pastor Jonathan Blaylock. They came, and he is the pastor at West Canton Baptist, and they came and volunteered on the Day of Caring. So while they were volunteering, he and his congregation, I was gathering more volunteers to come in and read, talking to them, you know, about if they worked, and would you want to volunteer and come to listen to little kids read? So I thought, well, if I can get three volunteers from his church, then maybe I can get three volunteers from each of the churches in Canton. So I sent out a message for the pastors to read to their congregations during church service. So we ended up with more people than we even thought we would have. So we decided to have a meeting and gather all these people together and talk about what we wanted to do. And we were thinking that maybe five people would show up, and I think we had probably 30 people show up that day just for the meeting to talk about, you know, what we wanted to do. And so I'm going to let them talk about where that led. And I also, in the meantime, met Allison Spruill, and she is over Congregations for Children. While we were waiting on this meeting to happen, somebody told me that there was another type program going on, and Allison is over that, and I'm going to let her talk about that. I also brought with me a teacher from my school, Lori Moody. She's a second grade teacher. And I brought Brooklyn Riddle, who is a second grade student, to talk to you a little bit about how our program is going.
Good evening. I'm Jane Mauer. I'm the lead teacher at North Canton Elementary. And as Ms. Mann just explained, we have a great program, and with it, we wanted to provide some flexibility to our volunteers. So we have them come into the office and check in. On days if they would like to be there every day at that time, we work with them on that, or if they would like to come in and just see who's doing independent reading at a certain time, we also are flexible there and let them slide into a grade level that they're comfortable with. So we provide the flexibility for their schedules. And we also wanted to give them a little bit of guidance on how to work with the students. So we did a training, and I used, I pulled together what's called a brain game. And I used our Level Literacy Instruction, our LLI, resource to build this, to provide prompts for the students to choose a harder, more critical thinking type question, as well as for the reading buddies to ask more critical thinking questions. So we provide this for them, and they come in and grab one of these books and go off on their way.
Hi, I'm Allison Spruill with the Congregations for Children, and I'm our Haywood County representative on the Congregations for Children conference team that we have. Congregations for Children is a statewide initiative that was started by the Methodist Church. However, it is ecumenical in that we invite all churches to collaborate rather than duplicate services, because we have lots of churches in our area that really want to reach out to the schools. And sometimes we get overwhelming support with school supplies, but that may not be what the schools actually need the most. And so through communication, through congregations for children teams in the area, we reach out to local schools to determine what those needs might be and how we can serve them and spread that in the church community. We met with Dr. Garrett, actually, last fall, fall of 2016, to talk about the Congregations for Children program, and we were starting that last spring at Meadowbrook Elementary. We had 33 students paired with reading buddies that were volunteers from nine local churches in the area. And out of those 33 students, their test scores at the beginning of this year had all of them go away from the program. They no longer needed the program except for just one child, because they tested higher at the beginning of the year, because they had that additional reading support along with the great education they're receiving in the schools. And so this year, we were very excited when we heard that North Canton was looking to have a reading buddy program and thought we could then collaborate our services and help with some of the support that we offer to have that program be as successful at North Canton.
Thank you.
I'm Pastor Jonathan Blaylock. I'm pastor at West Canton Baptist Church, and North Canton Elementary School is right there in our district. And our church exists to bring glory to God, and we believe that one way that we can do that is to serve people and to love people like Jesus did. And so we want to partner with North Canton Elementary School, and we believe what the faculty there is doing, we believe what the teachers are doing is to educate our children. We believe they have the best interest of these kids in mind and at heart, and so we want to come alongside them and help them do that any way that we can. And so we've got a handful of volunteers that, at their schedule, are able to, their flexibility, just able to pop in as they're able to, and just sit down with some students and to help them learn how to read, and to let them read to them. And one of the things that I would just emphasize on the whole reading buddy idea is the word buddy. And some of these kids need a buddy, and that's what my volunteers told me as I was collecting some information from them. They've found, they go to the same students very often, the same classrooms, and they truly have become buddies with some of these kids, and these kids need that. And so we're very grateful to North Canton Elementary School for what they're doing, and we're grateful to have the opportunity to come alongside them and to partner with that school. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I'm Lori Moody, and I think you copied what I had written down already, because a lot of it's what I was going to say. Reading buddies is going really well at North Canton Elementary. I have three adult reading buddies who come into my classroom on a regular schedule, and what they do is they read with the children while I'm doing guided reading. And these buddies come on Mondays and Tuesdays unless they have a prior commitment, like, you know, a doctor's appointment or something like that. And not only are these volunteers a reading buddy, they are a buddy to the children who are in my class. Usually before they start reading, the buddy strikes up a conversation with the student about something that's been going on with them, and then they ask the student to share with them, and they just, you know, it's just a real sweet time. Then when the child reads, the buddy is very intent on listening to what the student's reading, correcting them when they're needed to be corrected, and always positive in the delivery that they have between them. Praise is always given for the work that they're doing. When the student finishes reading, the reading buddy asks various questions from his or her comprehension questioning notebook to check for understanding. The volunteers come into the classroom quietly without any interruption, and then they just get busy listening, questioning, and conversing with the children. I don't know who enjoys this time more, because there's smiles all around, and you can see that from the pictures. Not only are these children given the additional reading time, they're getting one-on-one personal time from a positive, caring adult, and with many of these children, that's what they need the most of. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I am Brooklyn Riddle, and I'm in Ms. Cochran's second grade class. I enjoy reading buddies. Why? Why I like the reading buddies is because they're fun, but also they help me. Like the other day, the reading buddy helped me with a word. I also love reading with expression. I wouldn't be where I am, I wouldn't be where I am right now without the reading buddy.
Thank you, North Canton, and thank you for all the volunteers that came tonight, and especially for the young lady that read to us today. Thank you for coming. Next on our agenda, we have Mr. Hines coming up, but I failed to do something during our announcement. I meant to mention that Mr. Henson had a church meeting. He had a commitment to go to this evening. And Mr. Francis had a business appointment that he could not miss tonight. And I failed to mention, too, that I'm a new grandfather. I know Kelsey would kill me if she knew that I came to the meeting and didn't announce the birth of my grandson. His name is Soren Henry Saxon, and he weighed seven pounds, 10 ounces, and he was 21.25 inches long. And he's loved tremendously by his bapa and his mimi, and his mother and father, so we're happy. Next, we have Mr. Hines. Sorry about that, Mr. Hines.
Congratulations, Mr. Francis.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Garrett, Dr. Nolte, Mr. Smathers. He says he always gets left out, so I want to make sure.
Maybe that's a reason behind it.
We're recognizing him tonight for helping draft the Federalist Papers. I'm just kidding. Tonight is one of the really fun nights in education where we get to recognize folks, particularly this night, teachers who have done some extraordinary things with our students. And it's such a pleasure to get to be here and recognize them and call out their names and talk about the great things that they're doing. The first group that we're going to recognize tonight are the teachers who received a bonus this year from the state. And there are two types of bonuses that they could get. One is what we call the state bonus, for lack of a better term, and that means that they were able to teach their students to the point where they performed in the top 25% across the state. So if a teacher received a state bonus, they were in the top 25% in student performance of all the teachers in the state of North Carolina. Now, to put that in perspective, there are 496,000 teachers in North Carolina. A little over 300,000 of them are in elementary and middle school, which is the grade levels where you could earn this particular bonus. So that's quite an achievement. They could also earn what we call a local bonus, even though it's called local, it is still paid by the state with state funds. And teachers who receive this bonus performed in the top 25% of the teachers in this district. And given the performance of this district in the state, that's no small achievement either. So of all the great teachers in North Carolina, these are in the top 25%. We want to brag on all our teachers tonight, but unfortunately, we can't give the bonus to all of them, but we're more than happy to do it for these. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to call out their name, and when they come in, I'll let you know which bonus they received, or some of them have both of them. And it could range anywhere from $3,500 to $8,400 if they receive both the state and the locals. So let's get started with the third grade reading bonus. Okay, for third grade reading, the state bonus goes to Michelle Ford. State bonus to Susan Francis. The state and local bonus to Angela Hamel from Junealuska Elementary. The state and local bonus to Debbie Howe from North Canton. State and local bonus to Rhonda Rogers from Jonathan Valley. Sorry, wrong one. State and local bonus to Kimberly Riley from North Canton. The state bonus to Kimberly Serenius from Clyde. State and local bonus to Pamela Valentine from North Canton. State and local bonus to Rena White from Clyde Elementary. And the state bonus to Amanda Williamson from Hazelwood. And I forgot on the first three, Michelle Ford's from Junealuska, and Susan Francis from Hazelwood, and Angela Hamels from Junealuska, so congratulations. The next one is the fourth and fifth grade reading and math bonus. So fourth and fifth grade teachers had the opportunity to earn a bonus in reading and math and could possibly get a little over $8,000 in bonus. Sir? Okay.
All right, guys, you ready? One, two, three. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay. Fourth and fifth grade reading and math bonus. The state and local bonus in reading and math to Suzanne Bigsby from Riverbend Elementary. State and local bonus, reading and math, to Karen Hopkins. She's from Bethel Elementary. The local bonus in reading and math goes to Allison Hutchby from Meadowbrook. State and local bonus to Amy Kilgore from Junealuska Elementary. The state bonus to Rachel Rosati from Jonathan Valley. State and local bonus to Lindsay Shelton from North Canton Elementary. The local bonus to Carly Wales from Clyde Elementary. And the state and local bonus to Samuel Yancy from Jonathan Valley Elementary. Do a picture, absolutely. Say bonus. All right, the next group we want to recognize is teachers who've received either the reading or the math bonus in fourth, fifth, and eighth grade. You could get the math bonus all the way through eighth grade. All right, so the first one tonight for that is Ashley Caldwell, Jonathan Valley. Congratulations. And the math bonus on the state and local goes to Heather Chastain from Clyde Elementary. The reading bonus, the local reading bonus to Angela Duckett from North Canton Elementary. Eighth grade math bonus, local eighth grade math, to Christopher Froch from Bethel Middle. State and local eighth grade math bonus to Cherie Hill from Waynesville Middle.
Sixth grade.
Sixth grade.
Sixth grade.
Sorry. Sixth grade. State and local math bonus to Erin Horton, Clyde Elementary. State and local eighth grade math to Ronald Hundley Jr. from Bethel Middle. Local reading bonus to Lindsay Honeycutt, Riverbend Elementary. Local eighth grade math bonus to Daniel Hyatt at Waynesville Middle. Local math bonus to Laura Kirchner from Bethel Elementary. State and local math bonus to Courtney Myers, Hazelwood Elementary. Local math bonus to Rosemary Rogers, Hazelwood Elementary. State and local eighth grade math bonus State and local eighth grade math bonus to Laura Turner, Waynesville Middle School. Thank you. Okay, board members, the next group we want to recognize is the CTE, Career and Technical Education, teachers. They are eligible to receive a bonus from the state for each student who receives a certification in their particular area. For example, if you teach computers and one of your students receives a certification from Microsoft, you could receive a $50 bonus for each student who does that. So different CTE areas have different certifications that students can receive, and you can get a bonus for that. And we had several high school teachers who received well over $2,000 in bonuses at $50 a whack for students getting these certifications, so that's fantastic. The first one we want to recognize is from Tuscoa High School, Lisa Bergen. Also from Tuscoa High School is Roberta DeWesandre. Also from Tuscoa is Amanda Early. Tuscoa High School, Amy Gardner, Gardner. Also from Tuscoa is Eric Sully. From Pisgah High School, Jacob Hannah. And also from Pisgah is Stephanie Kirkendall. Thank you. Alright, the next group is the Advanced Placement Teachers at the high school level, who teach advanced placement courses such as U.S. History, Biology, and so forth. If their students score well enough on the AP exam to receive college credit, they can also receive a $50 bonus per student from the state in recognition of those efforts. So from Tuscoa High School, we have Mr. Randy Pressley. Also from Tuscoa is Maggie Melville. Also from Tuscoa is Roberto Robles. Also from Tuscoa High School is Erica Smiley. And from Pisgah High School is Sean Sampson.
Alright guys, one, two, three. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Alright, the next group that we want to talk about is the National Board Candidates. Every year across the nation, teachers apply and go through a very rigorous year-long, sometimes this year it was two years, they changed the setup on the teachers and made it a two-year program. There's a very strenuous staff development program for teachers to try to better improve their skills in the classroom. And this year, North Carolina recognized Haywood County as being fifth in the state for the number of teachers who applied to do this, which is quite the testament to our two National Board coordinators and coaches here. So I wanted to recognize them first, Joy Sully, who has been coordinating this and recruiting teachers, and helping them do the applications and get everything in so that they can do it. And Sandy Strong has been coaching them on their portfolios that they have to turn in as part of the grading process to receive this. And this process could not have happened without them, and so we want to recognize them tonight and thank them for two years now of doing this, and they have recruited another cohort of a little over 40 teachers to do it going forward this year. So thank you to Joy and to Sandy. Thank you. Margaret's got a little present for you. I also want to, before we call the teachers in, I want to recognize Margaret for all the work that she's done to organize this tonight. I know it's hard for y'all to believe that I wrapped all that and made it so pretty, but that was just a small part of it. She organized the list, and I want to thank Brooke for doing all the certificates and getting all this together, and we appreciate them for doing that. Alright, so we had a few teachers who renewed their National Board certification this year, and we're very proud of them for doing that. They will have another 10-year certification now in the classroom, and will receive an extra 12% pay from the state for achieving this, and so we want to recognize them. The first renewal candidate was Heidi Ash. Next is April Hyder. I also neglected to tell you that the National Board folks told us that the national average for passing this is about 20%. And Haywood County Schools this year's passing rate was over 50%, so we're very proud of
Alright, on three. One, two, three.
Thank you. Okay, the next group is the new candidates this year who received National Board certification the first time, for the first time. We're very proud of them as well. Big raise at the Atwood House. They are married, by the way. Just want to tell a little story. Daphne called me last year after we'd been into it for a year and said, "I want to do National Boards," and I said, "Sorry, it's a two-year deal. You're a year out of it." She said, "I think I can do it in a year," and I said, "Okay, I'll let you try." Dang if she did it. Congratulations. Good job. And Amber Turner. If you're wondering, I don't want to spoil the surprise for them, but what's in the packages is they get a really nice certificate from National Board, and we have them a frame for their certificate that says National Board Teacher on it. So y'all enjoy those. Hang it up where everyone can see it. Just get down on there. Joy, you want to say anything about this crowd? Sandy?
No, they were just saying they probably didn't get recognized. We didn't.
They do. We recognize them. We do.
Alright guys, on three.
Say a lot of work.
One, two, three. Thank you so much.
Good job. You're welcome. Thank you, board members. I appreciate it. Next on our agenda, we have Mr. Ron Moss.
I'm so glad to work in this district. I feel like I've sprained my arm clapping. It's great. It is my honor to, tonight, to have been asked to recognize one of the most all-around best teachers I ever had the opportunity to work with. So Chairman Francis Board, Dr. Nolte, I want to introduce to everyone Cindy Blankenship, who unfortunately has retired. Cindy, to me, was the model of what a good teacher is. Since PE was her specialty, in particular, a PE teacher, she was a great role model for her peers and other people here in our county. Cindy was a student advocate, is a student advocate, who has always driven to do what was best for children, and to do what was in their best interest. As a PE teacher, she sought to integrate core curriculum, so it was not just PE, but it was a way of helping to support what was going on in the regular classroom. And all of that was a means to engage and inspire children to be the best that they could be. An example of this, this is what really impressed me my first year at Bethel, she had a skeleton in the gym whose name was Fred. And from the time students entered Bethel in kindergarten, they were introduced to a certain number of bones on the skeleton. And at the end of class, one of the things that she would do would be to quiz the students on the bones on that skeleton, so that by the time kids left Bethel in fifth grade, they could name every bone in the human body. Okay? That was great. At the end of each day, I mean, she did everything she could to motivate kids and to help them think about being the best that they could be. So at the end of each class, there was a motto that they recited, "Eat right, stay fit, work hard, never quit. Brain wise, safety smart, live strong for a healthy heart." All of this taken into consideration, back in the fall, Cindy was named the 2017 Outstanding Physical Education Program here in the state of North Carolina. She was presented her award and was honored back in November in Winston-Salem at the...
NC Aford.
Yep, say that again.
NC Aford. Health Physical Education.
I could name all those. Okay. The North Carolina Alliance for Athletics, Health, Physical Education, Recreation, Dance, and Sports Management. So at their convention, she was honored. Her award was based on the following criteria. The Physical Education Program Teacher demonstrates an understanding of the scope and sequence of the healthful living curriculum by teaching age and grade-level appropriate activities. The Physical Education Program Teacher serves as a positive role model, exemplifying personal health and fitness, enjoyment of activity, sportsmanship, and sensitivity to the needs of students. The Physical Education Program Teacher promotes physical activity outside of the classroom. I worked with Cindy, and as I said in the beginning, she is one of the best teachers I ever had the privilege of working with. And she truly is a great teacher and a gifted teacher. And so we are recognizing her tonight. And so, we are recognizing her tonight from the district with a certificate honoring her for her award. And she is going to speak to you here.
Thank you very much, Dr. Garrett, Dr. Nolte, Board members. Thank you for acknowledging me tonight for the program being chosen as the outstanding Elementary Physical Education Program in the state. This honor has been years in the making. I could not have achieved this without great administration, colleagues, and my kids. Dr. Nolte, I can't look at you because I'll cry. Early in my career at Bethel, you always encouraged me, believed me, trusted in me, and allowed me to step out of the box and introduce more than just games and sports. You allowed me to be creative, teach my kids about lifetime activities, ways to become healthy, bones, muscles, and many other aspects of being the best that they could be. Thank you. Mrs. Barker, I'm not looking at you either because I'll cry. I've spent half of my 30 years under her supervision. I don't know where to begin. You always listened to my ideas and goals, whether you agreed with them or not, whether you thought they were crazy, or whether you thought that I could achieve them. But you always listened. You supported me, trusted me, and gave me ideas of how to achieve the things I wanted for our kids. You truly understood that our kids deserved a physical education teacher that believed in them, supported them, loved them, and wanted to instill a love for lifetime activities and healthy living. You were a cheerleader, you led by example, and your love and high expectations for all our kids was contagious. Thank you for that. Even though this recognition is about my program, for me, it's never been about me. It's always been about my kids. Thank you, Haywood County, for 30 great years.
Next on our agenda is Mr. Jeff Haney.
Dr. Garrett, Dr. Nolte, Chairman Francis, Board members, it is an honor and privilege to introduce Bethel Middle School's wrestling coach, David Bryson.
I'm here representing Bethel Middle School with the wrestling team this year. This year, we had three individual conference champions from the school. One's not able to be here, and I'll go ahead and announce him first. These kids put in a lot of work, a lot of effort this year in the season. A lot of them coming a long way in a short amount of time. Our first one, first young man is Drew Timms. He's not able to be here today, but he was an eighth grader, first-year wrestler, never done the sport before. So he really put in a lot in a very short amount of time. In about three months' time, he learned the sport and became a great asset. And congratulations to him, he earned himself a conference championship. So, that's our first one. Next up, we have my first, I believe it is the first within our conference. We have a sixth grader who won a conference championship this year. He's been around the rest of the long time. I've coached him and seen him wrestle for quite a while, and he's a hard worker, a leader as a sixth grader. And congratulations to him, that's Chance Rector. And then, our last conference champion this year was, he's been, I've coached him for a few years as well. He's an eighth grader this year. And he's a hard worker. He was a captain of the team, a good leader, a good young man to be around. He's going to do big things, I'm sure, at the next level. He was 15-0 undefeated. Reese Moore, eighth grader.
In the school system, you always look forward to seeing a young person that plays, a young athlete, to give back to the community. I've had the honor of working with the next young man, Casey Crook, as a high school student. He was a leader on the basketball court. He was a leader in school. And now I get to introduce him as a leader from Pisgah High School. So, Mr. Crook, you'll step up.
Thank you, Mr. Haney. Role model for me. My dad used to give him fireballs to keep him from talking so much. True story. Board members, thank you for having us, Dr. Garrett and Dr. Nolte. We appreciate you guys. I want to give a couple of recognitions here to Pisgah High School, and I'm not going to talk much, I'm going to have them talk. One that I forgot to mention or to have on the agenda was something that I think is really, really special. It was our women's tennis team. They had an unweighted GPA of 3.77 this past semester. And that's impressive. That's a really good job by those girls. So we'll get them some stuff later. First, I'd like to introduce somebody that's really fired up about saying a few words. That's Ms. Tammy Ensley with our cheerleaders.
Hello, I'm Tammy Ensley, and I have four juniors on the Pisgah varsity cheerleading team that are recognized as All-Region Cheerleaders by the North Carolina Cheerleading Coaches Association. I've been a member for 10 years. So it's a good, it's across the state to have girls from Haywood County representing. Macy Henry. Madison Owen. Addison Spavy. And Abigail Shoemaker wasn't able to be here tonight.
Next, we've got, oops, sorry. My bad, didn't mean to steal your thunder. Next, we've got some members of our men's soccer team and Coach Ralph Michael.
I've got two to introduce tonight, Brian Castillo-Pina and Kobe Hendry. They're both juniors, and they both made All-Region Team as juniors. For us, Pisgah to have two players on the All-Region Team is unusual. For them to be juniors is even more unusual, and it really is down to their hard work and dedication to the sport. The nice thing about this is hopefully we'll be here again next year, and there'll be seniors in All-Region, and maybe we can add another one as well. So, congratulations to them.
And last but not least, we've got our head varsity football coach Brett Chapel and head JV coach Jacob Hanna to give some football awards.
Good evening, Dr. Garrett, Board, crowd that's here. Decided about the opportunity to come in and to be able to talk about our young kids and accomplishments that they've made. Our JV team was the conference champions of the Mountain Six for 2017. We brought four of our captains with us here tonight that I'd like to recognize and tell you a little bit about them as they come in. Ryan Reynolds. Ryan was a wide receiver and cornerback for us. Ryan also has a 3.9 GPA. Keegan Hudson. Keegan played wide receiver for us and defensive back as well. Keegan has a 4.0 GPA. Lane Meese. Lane was a running back and safety, takes after his coach with his GPA, 4.125. And Tucker Locerson. Tucker played offensive lineman, that's right, offensive lineman, and linebacker for us. Tucker has a 4.0 GPA. We are certainly proud of these young men, not only for the things that they accomplished on the field, but for also the things that they do in the classroom as well and the leaders that they are. They were voted by their teammates to be the captains of our team, and certainly proud of those guys and glad to be able to recognize them tonight. I've got one more young man to recognize. I'm going to recognize him in a lot of ways. Mr. Taren Brown played defensive tackle for us. Taren was a young man that, he and I share a very unique relationship, to say the least, but certainly a pleasure to be around. He was named Lineman of the Year in our conference, had a phenomenal season for us, led our team in sacks and tackles for loss, and also led the conference in sacks. And for that, was nominated as the Lineman of the Year in our conference. Taren also holds a 3.5 GPA. Probably the best part about Taren is he's a junior and I get another year with him. I'm going to brag on him on one more piece of information real quick before I turn him loose. He has a special relationship with my son as well. My son's seven years old. Certainly looks up to a lot of our players, but my son's a little wrestler as well. And Taren has had a phenomenal season for us on the mats. He is undefeated right now. He is the 2018 Western Region 2A Heavyweight Champion. He's the number-one seed going into the finals this weekend, and we certainly hope he is back next month at this meeting, and y'all are recognizing him for a state championship. Outstanding job. Thank you all.
Thank you, guys. I did want to mention, too, Taren's done a wonderful job. We've also got Chandler Weinbarger, Louis Mahaffey, and Braden Riggs will be wrestling the state championship this weekend, and all have a really good shot of doing well down there. Thank you, guys, for allowing us to be able to come here and for recognizing our kids. We appreciate you always. Thank you.
I had a little old Taren down at Clyde when I was principal down there, and he was a little old boy then. I always had that nice smile. You talking about a good kid. It's good to see these kids doing so well. It's an honor and a privilege to introduce Jill Barker, the principal at Pisgah High School.
I know you've been here a while, but thank you for allowing our kids. This means so much to them and to be honored in that way. They've worked really hard. But tonight, we are here to honor you. We know last month was National School Board Appreciation Month, and so we have a special gift that our students made for you. If you've never been to Chip Singleton, y'all come in. Oh, he's here. I told him there wouldn't be many people here tonight, so I'm in big trouble tomorrow. Anyway, so I wanted him to come, and I know they're busy after school, but what, it just amazes me every day what goes on in that class. He usually has to kick us out because I get mesmerized, and I mean, it's unbelievable, the money, the jobs that our kids have because of that program. As a former VCA teacher, it's everything that vocational education is about. And I told him, "You've got to come and tell them." But first of all, we'll get your gift. Do you want to give them their gift? Come on and talk. This is Mr. Singleton and two of our students, so he's going to introduce them.
I'll introduce them as they come around. The first one is Kyler Fouts, and then Lucas McCracken. And they've both got their GE Aviation shirts on, and they just got off work just about an hour ago, and they're apprentices there. And they're a long line of them. We've had a bunch of them over the years. As a matter of fact, Kyler's older brother Caleb did the same program back in 2011 when he was a senior in high school. So this is the first siblings we've had do it. But they work, they leave after second period, and they go to work. They work 12:30 to 6:30, Monday through Friday. They're getting in 30 hours a week, and they're learning how to make parts for jet engines. And they start off at school making such things as fidget spinners, like they've made you. And that seems pretty simple, but it progresses into making parts for jet engines. So, they have a bright future ahead of them. It's not some kind of consolation prize because they weren't going to college. These young men have the GPAs to go about anywhere they wanted to go, but they chose this route. And with choosing that, they're going to get their education paid for by the company. And they can take it as far as they want to go, an associate's degree or even an engineering degree. And they saw this opportunity early on, and the school motto's on the fidget spinners that says, "Passionate work, productive work, student success." And I think these young men are prime examples of that. So, we appreciate you taking time to hear us today and to meet these young men, and we'd love to invite any of you anytime, drop by the shop. We'd love to see, show you what's going on. And by the way, GE, because they recognized us last year, because 20 percent of their workforce now has came through the apprenticeship program at Pisgah. And that was a pretty good, big deal for us and a big deal for them, and they gave us some money. And we've got some fancy new toys we work with. And the engraving on those was actually done on a fiber laser machine that we purchased with the money that they gave us. And we're learning that new technology and having a lot of fun with it. So we'd love for you to come by and see what's going on.
Through the GE program, they have made some good money as young children, you know, twenty-year-old making some pretty big $17, $18, $20 an hour work and plus getting your education. So that's, I can say it like Mr. Singleton said, if nobody's been to that machine shop, need to check it out. That's the best in the country, as far as I'm concerned.
Mr. Rogers, Jimmy Rogers, would you come forward, please, for some special recognition?
This pains me to give this to Jimmy because for years, Jimmy and I have been unfriendly competition. Who could get the most continuing education hours through the North Carolina School Boards Association? And by law, Board members are supposed to have about 12 hours, I believe, each year. And Jimmy's held true to the course, and he's achieved Diploma of Honor. And this is presented to Jimmy. And this is presented to Jimmy Rogers from Haywood County for successful completion of school board training during the 2016-2017 Academy Year. Congratulations, Jimmy, as much as it pains me. I just have to keep trying to get to the meetings and not having so much company stuff going on, but anyway. I'll tell you another little story I wanted to tell you tonight is about a former board member, and for those of you might not have been on the board at the time, a lot of you probably were not, but I think Steven was and Jimmy was, but we had a board member from the Bethel Community, Mr. Johnny Woody. And I tried to recognize Johnny Woody for his years of service on our board numerous times. I invited him for six months, eight months, 10 months, a year went by, and I had the plaque in my truck, and I made up my mind one day. I realized he worked up on Main Street at the Realty Office up there, and I saw his truck pull in, and I just swerved in real quick. I had my wife with me. We was going to go eat something over at Bogart's. And I ran in there and I said, "I need to see Johnny Woody." I had to get the receptionist to bring him up there. And he came up to the front there, and I got Vicki to document the fact that we had actually given him this plaque. And so I got a picture of me presenting him with this plaque, much to his dismay, but we did finally get it in the Mountaineer paper and had to run him down. And I thought that's what I was going to have to do with this fellow board member that we are going to recognize tonight, but I see that he snuck in after all the awards have been given out. But Mr. Scott Smith, would you please come forward for some recognition? The plaque says, "This is award of recognition, Haywood County Schools presents to Scott Smith in appreciation for your dedicated service, devotion, and commitment to Haywood County Schools by the Haywood County Schools Board of Education." Scott, thank you so much for your service. You were a great board member. We appreciate what you did while you were here, and thank you so much for coming tonight so we can present you with this.
I just want to say thanks to all the administrative staff, board members, teachers, principals, everybody. I think everybody does a great job for Haywood County Schools. Appreciate your service.
I have one more special recognition I would like to present. Ann Garrett and I go back. We go back many, many years. I think, I know that I knew her in 1969, and I'm telling on my age and her age too, but she signed my annual in 1969. I think she said, "Best wishes." And for a kid that age, that just means we were good friends. Anyway, I've enjoyed knowing Ann Gentry, Dr. Ann Garrett, for many, many years, and our relationship has been very professional through our time here on the board, and I appreciate that. She's done an excellent job, and I had a speech all written out, but you know what? I just wanted to tell what was on my heart tonight. I appreciate the many years of service, Ann, that you've given to Haywood County Schools. Your awards are numerous, more numerous than, I'd really like to go over because we've been here for a long time because you have a lot of awards, and you've earned them. You've done an excellent job guiding Haywood County Schools from quite honestly mid-pack to in the top 10% of the schools in the state. And I would like to present to you this plaque as a small token of our appreciation from the Haywood County School Boards. Dr. Ann Garrett, in grateful recognition of for 40 years of distinguished service and outstanding leadership to Haywood County Schools, 1978 to 2018, awarded the 12th day of February 2018 by Haywood County Schools Board of Education. Congratulations.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, it certainly has been an honor to serve as your superintendent. I never dreamed that I would be working in my own hometown, my own community, so I'm just very, very appreciative of everything that we have done together because we really have done a lot when you go back and look through the years. We certainly have the best teachers, as you can see from tonight. We have the best athletes. We have the best community. We have the best parents. We have the best principals. We just have a really great school system, so thank you very much.
See if my eyes will work now. Ms. King, did anyone sign up to address the board decision? No? Okay. Board members, you've had an opportunity to read and look over the January 9th closing regular session minutes. At this time, we entertain a motion to be approved as presented.
So move.
Mr. Kirkpatrick's made the motion.
Second.
Second, Mr. Bobby Rogers. Any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. This time now, I need to recognize our attorney, Mr. Pat Smathers.
Mr. Chairman, board members, I need to officially notify you that of an issue that we may have inadvertently violated the opens meetings law at the last January 9th meeting. As you well know, the meeting was scheduled for January the 8th, but at the last minute was canceled and in good faith was scheduled for the following day. Unfortunately, that may not be correct as to the technical reading of the opens meetings law. As with any statute, it's a bare-bones statute, and there's been no formal decision on exactly that type situation. But in any event, I think it's the better practice to reaffirm and accept all action that was taken on the 9th meeting. At that January 9th meeting, of course, it was announced that when it was canceled on the 8th, that the meeting would be held the following day. It was publicized, notification went out to the press and all other interested parties, but still, there may be a technical violation of the opens meetings law, and we certainly don't want to get a reputation of violating the opens meeting law. We enjoy a very good reputation of following it as best we can understand it. And so I have prepared a motion that effectively accepts, reaffirms, and ratifies all actions taken by the board meeting on January the 9th, and that'd be, I think that's the proper solution to make, and that's part of my job is to identify issues and come up with solutions if we can, so let's know that.
Thank you, Mr. Smathers.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, I would like to make a motion that I move that the board accept, ratify, and reaffirm all decisions and actions taken by the board at the January the 9th, 2018 meeting, which began at 12:31 PM and adjourned at 1:18 PM. The meeting held on January the 9th being a rescheduled meeting for the January 8th, 2018 meeting, which was canceled due to the inclement weather.
And we have a motion on the floor. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Bobby Rogers and a motion from Mr. Jimmy Rogers. Any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board. I believe that corrects any possible error that we may have inadvertently committed that day due to the weather. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Next on our agenda, we have Mr. Todd Trantham.
Mr. Chairman, item number 17 on your agenda is a proposal for us to complete a network project during the 18-19 school year. The estimated cost of that project is $600,000. As most of you know, the way that E-rate works, we will sometime in the next month apply for grant money to fund this project. Total cost of about $600,000. E-rate will cover 80% of that. So E-rate is going to cover somewhere in the neighborhood $480,000 of that. And right now, the state of North Carolina has been very good to us, and so they have been appropriating money to pay the remaining portion for us. And so if all things go well, next year, somewhere in the fall, we'll get grant approval from the federal government, and the state of North Carolina will put another $120,000 in one of our PRC codes to pay the remaining 20%, and we can go to town on completing a $600,000 project that will put additional wireless in some of our schools, as well as upgrade some of the network gear that has to operate behind that wireless. The total cost to us out of pocket is probably going to be out of my budget somewhere in the neighborhood of $10,000 to have a $600,000 project completed. I just need your approval to be able to move forward and complete that paperwork.
Thank you, Mr. Trantham. I hear a motion that we accept this. Ms. Barrett makes a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second, Mr. Bobby.
Wake up. Second by Mr. Jimmy Rogers. Any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Good job, Mr. Trantham. A $600,000 deal for $10,000, I think is money well spent. Next, we have Mr. Haney again. He's been busy tonight.
Well, Mr. Shepherd's out working somewhere, and so he asked me to kind of fill in some.
That's great.
Fill in for him. Board members, I'd like to propose the graduation dates. Pisgah High School on June 16th, that's a Saturday, at 11:00 AM at the Ramsey Center at Western Carolina. June 15th, Friday night, for Tuscola at the Ramsey Center, Western Carolina. Central Haywood High School, June 16th at 3:00 PM in Bell Auditorium on Haywood Community College Campus. Alternative Learning Center is June 5th at 6:00 PM in the Bell Auditorium. I think that's a Tuesday. And Haywood Early College will graduate May 11th at 7:30 in the Bell Auditorium.
Can we have the proposed graduation dates? Anyone like to make a motion that we accept those dates?
Motion to accept.
Mr. Rogers made a motion to accept it. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Kirkpatrick. Any question or discussion on the motion? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Trantham. Mr. Haney. Been a good night. Dr. Nolte.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Garrett, Mr. Smathers. I'm also filling in for Mr. Shepherd, who's on mission, I think, in Africa. That's true. That's not a joke, and we appreciate his work doing that. Each year, as you well know, our schools develop extensive safety plans. I looked through a huge notebook tonight, understand Mr. Shepherd invited you all earlier to come by Brooks' office and look at those. They look in good standing. We do not publish those for very obvious reasons of safety and security. If we have to evacuate, we don't want people to know where we're going, or we don't want them to know key players in various situations. But at this time, we are asking for your approval of those plans based upon their creation and our review, and you're certainly welcome to come by and look at those also.
I make a motion that we approve the school safety plans as presented.
Mr. Kirkpatrick's made a motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Clark's made the second. Any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Also for Mr. Shepherd, and then I serve on the policy committee along with Mr. Jimmy Rogers and other people, the policy for first reading is the teacher contracts policy. You all will remember, we discussed in work session, and it was, if not a unanimous consensus, it was a very strong consensus from those of you who sought advice from State School Boards Association. Mr. Hines interviewed various groups of teachers, and we looked at it administratively and selected option two, which was the contract rotation of one, two, and four years. And so this is codifying that option in policy so that it can be in place for the coming school year. First reading.
It'll be tabled until the next regular board meeting for public input.
Yes, sir. And then the two policies for second reading, Mr. Shepherd shared with you at our last meeting. These are technical changes. The first one, assignment to classes adds one Carnegie-type class, and the second one about reporting child abuse just adds some footnote language and one directive for administrators. And those are technical changes, and to my knowledge, we have not received any questions or comments on those while they've been laying on the table.
This time, Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion that we approve the two policies presented.
Okay, we have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Ann Barrett. Any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Nolte. Next, we were going to insert some items that Building and Grounds has brought forward to the full board tonight, so I'll turn it over to Mr. Jimmy Rogers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Buildings and Grounds had met earlier, and we have several motions that we would like to bring before the full board for the approval. The town of Waynesville is needing to remove a few trees, maple trees, right along Camelot Drive under Waynesville Middle School Ball Field. These trees are root systems, beginning to tear up the sidewalk and some other areas, and this will be at no cost to our school system. The town of Waynesville assumes the responsibility of removing the trees and repairing the sidewalk damage. I bring that as a motion.
We have a motion, and do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Second, Mr. Kirkpatrick. Any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
And, Mr. Chairman, our next option is that we would like to bring as a motion that we have a company roof options to be replacing at Kenton Middle School cafeteria roofing with a standing metal seam roof, and this will be for a bid of $67,401, and this is also pending a reference check on the vendor to confirm. Is it a form of motion?
We have a motion on the floor. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bobby Rogers. Any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
One more, Mr. Chairman. We've been a little busy, and there'll be more to come. There was going to be placing an access control system at Central Haywood High School and also with the IT department area. This will be an amount of $55,000, and we will be using ADM funds to protect, I mean, for the funding of this project.
Okay.
Bring that in a form of a motion.
We have a motion from Mr. Jimmy Rogers. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Clark seconded the motion. Do I hear any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much from the Building and Grounds Committee. You understand it went really smooth this evening. Next, I'd like to recognize Mr. Ronnie Clark for our financial reports from our finance committee.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have three motions that we need to talk about from the finance committee. First, we have a motion to use local funds to pay a teacher performance bonus to one employee whose EV, AAS scores were in the top 25% for both state and LE. Our legislation employee was ineligible to be paid the bonus using state funds due to an employment status change in August. The cost to the local for the bonus will be $4,628.95, and that's including the taxes and stuff, or benefits. and stuff, the benefits. So it's actually $4,300, I think the bonus is.
Okay.
We voted finance to pay him because he got promoted to a lead teacher.
Okay. So we have a motion from the Finance Committee to
Motion, yes.
Approve the use of local money to pay the bonus.
Yes.
Do I hear a second to them?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bobby Rogers. Any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Okay. All right, Mr. Chairman, we have another motion. It's to approve purchase of cyber liability insurance at a cost of $2,500, and that'll be for remaining of 17, 18, and approximately $5,500 for 18, 19. And this is kind of like the, it's already in the budget.
Okay.
Insurance, so it's no cost, actually, and it's kind of this cyber protection stuff from the, what's it called, the cyber wire, the
Under cyber
Yeah, yeah, cyber tax and all that.
Okay. So it's liability insurance to cover that?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion from the Finance Committee.
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a second?
Second, Mr. [inaudible].
Second by Mr. Jimmy Rogers. Any question or discussion on the motion on the floor?
Have we been having problems, or is it just something that you?
Mr. Trantham.
We looked at this for a couple of years, and just kind of had that on our radar, and we just felt like it was time.
Current situation, the number of incidents that we've seen around the country of cybersecurity breaches, that it would be better for us to go ahead and do it now than respond after we had an issue. So no, we have not had any kind of issue that led us to this. It was really more of an abundance of caution.
I meant to say ransom wire, that's why I was trying to say, well, they steal your information, then they want a cost to come back. The insurance would cover all that, paying for all that. Like I said, it's already in the budget, correct?
Using his, part of his budget.
Part of his insurance money.
There you go. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, the final items, just to approve the monthly regular finance report, and everything looked good this month, no issues.
We have a motion from Mr. Clark in the Finance Committee. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kirkpatrick. Any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you for the work on the Finance Committee.
That's all I have, thank you.
That all you got? Okay, thank you. Next, we added an item about the calendar, since we've had a few of these, we're not gonna say that word, it's that white stuff that falls out of the sky that makes the roads real slick, so.
Chairman Francis, members of the board, for your approval, you have an amendment to our calendar weather plan.
Okay. There's quite a bit of discussion in our work sessions this evening about this, and at this time, we entertain a motion to accept it as presented.
I make a motion that we accept it as presented.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Clark. Any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Shockingly. Thank you.
Dr. Garrett, our personnel.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for your information, you have five separation from employments. You have five leave of absences. For approval, you have 10 personnel. You have 27 employee status changes for your approval.
Okay, at this time, we entertain a motion to be approved as presented.
Make a motion to approve it.
Ms. Barrett's made the motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
We have a second from Mr. Clark. Any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, number 28, under employee status change, for your approval.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve number 28 as the next head football coach at Tuscola High School and chief bear slayer. Second by Mr. Chairman, except for the bear slayer.
So you, did you second?
We have a motion from Mr. Rogers. I think it was seconded by other Rogers. Mr. Jimmy Rogers.
With exception to the bear slayer.
We'll take the commentary out of it. We just have a motion to approve number 28. Put it back together. Any question or discussion on the motion on the floor?
Let's hold that bear slayer back just a little bit.
There being none, other than what Mr. Clark said, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, you have seven substitutes to approve, two contracted services, 40 employee coaches, 13 non-employee coaches, and 13 volunteer coach services.
This time, we entertain a motion that we approve the remainder of the personnel.
I make a motion to approve it.
Ms. Barrett's made the motion. Second by Mr. Clark. Any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, it's a pleasure tonight for me to recognize Mr. Travis Collins, principal at Tuscola High School, who's going to introduce our new head football coach for Tuscola.
Dr. Garrett, Dr. Nolte, members of the board, it's a good-looking hat. It is my pleasure to introduce to you tonight the next head football coach at Tuscola High School. There are a lot of great things about being a principal. The biggest thing is getting to love on great kids. Emily, and John, and Jeff, and Byron, and so many others. The second greatest thing is being able to work with great teachers and great coaches. And every once in a while, you get the chance to hire absolutely wonderful people, kind of people that you want your boy to play for, that change the community, lead with integrity, and want to win, and will. And so it's my great pleasure tonight to be able to introduce to you the next head football coach at Tuscola High School, Mr. J.T. Postle.
First of all, just want to say thank you to the board, Dr. Garrett, Dr. Nolte, and of course, I've got to thank my administration, Mr. Collins, Ms. Fox, Mr. Mosserelli, and Mr. Shelton, who have given me nothing but support, not only tonight and through this whole process, but over the course of the last several years. It's great to work with administration that not only puts a lot of emphasis in the classroom, but also does it on the athletic fields, and that means a lot for me. I've also got to thank my wife, here Shaughnessy, she's got my two little ones. Without her support and everything that she does, I would not be able to do what I do. And to go along with your point, Mr. Rogers, she did tell me one thing. She said, "Now, remember, you better beat Pisgah, or two things are going to happen. One, I'm not going to be speaking to you a whole lot the week after, and number two, you're on your own for dinner that week." So we've got to make sure that that does not happen. This is a tremendous opportunity, opportunity, obviously. I just look to continue and build upon the great tradition that is Tuscola football. And I hope that I can be able to assist and help these young men not only be better football players, but to be better in the classroom, be better role models, and go on and be productive members of society. And again, I just want to say thank you. I really look forward to this opportunity. I'm ready to get to work. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Well, good luck at Tuscola, and thank you so much. Bringing your family, that was nice. We appreciate that. Thank you.
I'll be with you every game won there, Coach. This shirt'll turn red at that day, I'm sorry.
I'll be with you every game.
There being nothing else to come before the board at this time, meeting adjourned.